We'll call the Troy Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Wilkie?
Here.
Mrs. Erlich? Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mayor? Mr. Emrick?
Late but here.
Mr. Westmeyer? There's a quorum.
Okay, first item is the minutes from the May twenty-second meeting that have been disseminated and I tell all the members. Any corrections, deletions, or additions?
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's adopted. Okay, first item of the business is historical district application certificate of appropriateness. Fifteen South Market Street for exterior alterations. Painting brick facade, installing corrugated metal boxes, et cetera. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. So, really, the applicant's proposing, um, three main alterations to the fifteen South Market Street building. Um, previously, the previous owner, um, had put corrugated metal all over the entire facade. And then later on, that corrugated metal was removed to, uh, what you see today. In your staff packet, you'll see an existing conditions of the building. And then the next page, you'll see, uh, a design graphic outlining all the proposed changes. It's important to note that the signage is not a part of this application today. When we reviewed this, um, in correlation to the design manual, um, we had some challenges with the existing building having some contributing features. Uh, that's not, um, referenced on the OHI form because when the OHI form was done, it was corrugated metal. But there is some brick soldiers and some other borders around, um, some of the windows on both the second story. And then the Thompson sign at the top of the building. So that's really why, um, we had some issues with the paint colors. And I've passed around to, um, Mr. Wilkie, um, an example of the black color to your left there. Right, to the left, right by the microphone.
Oh.
Yep, there we go.
It's dark in here.
When we reviewed the, um, the metal awnings with, uh, design manual, section two point eleven, we also had con- some concerns with the metal awnings. The design manual is pretty specific and requiring cloth awnings, and they're, um, proposing corrugated metal awnings. So staff feels that the awnings are not compatible with the character of the building or district. Um, they are, however, proposing individual awnings, which is a good element to have. Lighting, we really did not have a whole lot of information on the, uh, two lights that are on, being proposed on both sides of the storefront. Um, so that's really, um, why we had the concern with the lights. So staff recommends denial of the proposed alterations based on the following. The brick is historically unpainted and includes character-defining features. Brick soldiers and other bands exist around both the second and third story as well as the Thompson sign at the top. The proposed paint will hide those features and otherwise detract from the integrity of the building, the historic integrity of the building. The proposed awnings do not complement the building or streetscape and otherwise, um, do not comply with the design manual. And then we did not have enough details on the lights, therefore, that's why we're recommending, um, denial on the lights as well. And that'll conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I was curious, the, everything we received was what was submitted, right, to, with their application?
That, that's correct. I know the applicant is here and she has some additional information to share with you.
Okay.
But that, that is what I received, yes, sir.
Would, uh, would you like to step to the microphone, identify yourself, and name and address?
Uh, my name's Beth Kerber, and we live at eight twenty Barnhart Road.
Okay. Uh, what I was curious about, I mean, there's no design details or, other than the rendering, which, um, you don't supply the details. Of the awnings themselves or the, or the corrugated boxes, um, you know, the type of finish, uh, appearance, you know, those type of things. It was very difficult to, at least for me, to, you know, make a thorough evaluation.
These drawings were actually, um, created in two thousand seventeen after the MKS case study. And I had a student of architecture and design draft these, uh, or draw these for me. And she studied exactly that, the architecture, the curb appeal, and this was what she came up with. Um, Jess Nielsen's done drawings for several people in downtown. Um, her work is pretty well-known and pretty well-received.
Who was it?
Jess Nielsen.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know, I know who you're talking about.
So she thought that the drawings were true to the historical preservation and the aesthetic of the streetscape. To the left of the Thomas, or Thompson building is, or I'm sorry, to the right of it, if you're facing the building, is the communications building. It has no windows. And it's the most unappealing building in Troy, I think. And I, it just, the buildings need some repair, they need some improvement. And I suggest a stain rather than a paint that would allow the mortar to breathe and it wouldn't damage the building in any way. When we bought the building, I removed the awnings that Roy had across the front of both buildings. When the awnings were up, they pulled on the brick and they damaged it to the extent that when it rained, it rained on the inside of my glass. So we've done some repairs in that aspect. But when I removed the awnings, I knew we were going to be submitting these drawings. But again, it was in two thousand seventeen and several things delayed this. And in the meantime, you've adapted design standards that don't fit my drawing, even though the drawing was done prior to that. So I think you should look at a streetscape and take each building into consideration on its own merit. Um, every, there's, I would say ninety percent of the buildings downtown are painted brick that were at one point not painted. Um, I think two years ago, Olive Oasis was able to paint their imported limestone. And that had more historical value than my building has.
Which one?
Olive Oasis.
Honestly.
Yeah, I, I know. Yeah, it's orange.
No, it's orange, I know, but I'm thinking that, uh, that prior to that was, uh, Pinky Scout.
No, Pinky Scout was next door.
Next door to it.
So this was Pinky Scout, this is now the orange building. So what I'm suggesting would really go with the whole colorful buildings of downtown. Agave and Rye was painted a dark color. Um, like I said, I'm willing to do a stain, which is a extremely more expensive method. But it's also better for the, the health of the brick. Um, actually, yeah, we brought a brick that I just stained this morning to show it's, it's porous. It allows the air to breathe, it allows it to wick the moisture and do its job.
Does that provide protection to, um, to the brick? I mean, it's true.
It really just colors the brick.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So as it hardens, as it gets the moisture in the air and the sun beating on it, it basically bonds to the brick and it's just like a layer of terr- uh, terracotta. So it doesn't damage the brick at all.
Well, getting back to some of the other, uh, issues that I had is, is, do you have any design details on those, on the corrugated metal awnings? You know, what the finishes would look like or what the structure would look like?
Other than the drawing, that's really what I would like it to look like. I've got, um...
I mean, who's ever fabricating these? Do they have any drawings on it, you know, showing dimensional?
It would be people from Kerber Sheet Metal, most likely.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, which makes sense.
So I haven't even, until I get it approved, I'm not gonna have anybody do a lot of work on it, um...
Does Kerber Sheet Metal do that kind of work?
If you know, if you know them. I mean, they...
I don't know what you mean. Because that's not typically what they do, or is it gonna be a...
No, I have some friends that are welders that would help do the frames. And then I would have Kerber Sheet Metal basically order the material to construct it. And then I would also make sure that it doesn't extend over twelve feet from, or twelve inches from the building. So it's not a high-wind situation. It's basically just, the sun coming through the window on the second floor heats that building up so much that it's actually hard to cool. And by putting something on the windows to help screen that sun and putting the awnings up, I'm hoping that it helps with the, the cost of the cooling.
Yeah, I, I would, I would still like to see, you know, a de- you know, a detail of the awnings and, um, you know, maybe like a three-D view, a side view to show the, you know, how they're gonna be compatible or comparable to any other awnings that are downtown. And then also samples of the materials to, to, because, I mean, being corrugated metal, is it galvanized or is it painted, uh?
It's galvanized.
Okay.
And I'm not set a hundred percent on that material. I mean, I'm open to suggestions. I would like to use metal because the lifespan is twenty years versus fabric awnings are only guaranteed for five years and the life of them is eight to twelve years. Fabric awnings are really expensive and they just don't last.
Yeah.
And I know that that's what the design standard asks for. They're really impractical in a lot of ways. And I'll be doing fabric on the other side, on the thirteen side.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess my questions are for Steph then. So regarding the, the paint of the brick, were, um, if there is additional detailed painting around those soldiers or something like that, and they, maybe a border color or something like that, would that pass? Or would it still be, there's no paint on those, those features?
So it would certainly help if you look at, take Agave and Rye for an example. They put white paint around all their brick soldiering. The way the guidelines read, it's pretty black and white, historically unpainted bricks shall remain unpainted.
No, no pun intended.
No, okay.
And I'm willing to do something to highlight the features.
And then I guess, um, regarding the, the metal versus the, uh, the awnings, is there, um, any reasons that we've stayed away from metal? Other than cost, or what, what additional are we considering?
Yeah, so metal has sharp, hard, rigid edges. That doesn't really flow with the streetscape. You also, um, the code is looking for individual awnings that are rounded, that, that blend in, so you don't have a really sharp edge. And I also have concerns with the galvanized finish. You're still gonna have some corrosion. What is that corrosion gonna look like? I know that, um, cloth does fade, we know that, but, um, I, I think cloth throughout downtown has been proven, um, and does have character. If you look originally at the streetscape, cloth was all over, all over the downtown.
It's also all over the downtown and poor repair. I've had to deal with it when I was over on Main Street. I had to go up and actually paint all the canvas because of the fading. And it, it's hard to maintain.
Yep.
And it's very temporary. And I'm, like I said, I'm willing to look at other materials of metal. I wouldn't mind doing a hammered copper, which would turn to ver degree, it would age with, which is what they put statues into parks. Um, as far as the round, or like the softening or the edges, this is a very masculine building, it's very edgy itself, it's basically a big block. So to soften that or to round it would not be, match the features or the architecture.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'll tell you, we've got a bare minimum of, uh, of quorum. I, I'm not really comfortable, uh, approving this as it is. I'd like to see some more information. Um, as far as the painted brick, uh, Jordan, you might not have been here. Uh, my, uh, one of my sensitivities is a previous case where somebody came in and just decided to not only start painting unpainted brick, but then continue to do so when we cited and we did stop work orders and the whole thing. And so we got a real education at that time as to what happens when you, um, when you paint unpainted brick. Uh, stain might help, but it's still not gonna mitigate totally, uh, the difference in the, in the potential damage to un- un- unpainted brick. As, as I understand it, again, when we got that education. And we were basically forced into a situation where, uh, we couldn't undo what was done because it would have made the bill, it would have damaged the exterior of the building even more. Um, so the paint issue, especially, I, I mean, black, yes, black is a, it's a pretty stark color. Uh, it was pretty radical that we, we went along with, um, Agave and Rye. I think it turned out very nicely. I think we, we need to keep in mind, though, Agave and Rye was painting over previously painted. So it had already been painted. We weren't going from unpainted to painted. Um, just a little history on this, uh, on, uh, Three Word Sisters building, uh, Thompson building. Um, back in two thousand seventeen, my recollection is, is that, um, uh, that you had to, uh, for reasons of potentially even, uh, more damage. And, uh, it was, uh, in such a state of disrepair that you were in a position where you had to take it down. So you basically had to come and ask for forgiveness after the fact, knowing that there was significant damage that had been done and was continuing to, uh, to be done. Uh, at that time, the, uh, the planning commission's approval of that, uh, was that this is an interim step and that we, that, uh, uh, final repairs and replacement of the awning and everything had to happen. Nothing's happened since then, it's been a long time. Um, partially, I think, uh, you know, I think that's the staff's issue. Partially also, we had the pandemic that hit and so a lot of things, you know, kinda went into slow motion, uh, for a little while. Um, as far as the, uh, the flower boxes and awnings, uh, Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with you. I'd like to see some other options. I am concerned, you know, at, at first, I liked your, your secondary option on the, on the copper. But you're right, you'll get that patina, not only patina but the green, uh, a little concerned about that. Then, no, if there's some kind of artificial, uh, you know, they, they have so many different materials and so many fake and manufactured different things. I'd like to see some alternatives. Um, you know, uh, Austin, right here in the, in two point one one, it says fabric awnings are preferred. And I know that means we want them. That's a little tiny different than, uh, than required. Um, but certainly, I certainly get, get your point on that. Um, you know, I, I did like initially, way back when, when I saw Jess's, uh, drawings, it, you know, it's kind of a neat look. Uh, especially when we talk about fifteen, which is next. But in the meantime, given, given the time that's gone by and the demands that were really placed on this board by, um, uh, outside forces, if you will, it's, in, uh, in addition to our own desire, uh, that's why we adopted the design standards. So we have those guidelines. Guidelines don't mean that it's an absolute hundred percent every time, that, uh, there can be some variances, but those variances are minor. Not completely disregarding them, so we wanna be sensitive to that, uh, especially since those guidelines aren't even a year old, I don't think, yet. Um, so that's a, another concern. Looking at the rendering, which, you know, it's kinda hard to, to see when it's embedded into the big report. Um, the spotlighting, you know, I, I'd just like to see more detail on it, too. I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I think it, you know, it looks, from what I can see, kind of a sharp feature. Um, just a little bit more detail before, before I can approve, uh, this particular one. So rather than a straight-out motion and denial, I'd, I would suggest that we table this one, move on to fifteen.
Is that a motion?
And look at fifteen. Uh, well, I just, I didn't wanna make that motion yet.
Move on to thirteen. We're talking about fifteen.
Thirteen, yeah, so we talk about thirteen next, uh, separately. But as far as fifteen, I can make that motion, but I, I wanted to keep it open for comments first.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. That's why I didn't make a motion to table.
All right, I'll make the motion to table this one, uh, until the next meeting, just on fifteen. And, and I would hope...
Can we be specific on the additional information we're requiring about?
Uh, the details on the spotlight, some alternatives on the, uh, on the metal awning. I'm not sure, uh, I can get on board with the paint, um, uh, painting the unpainted brick. Um, especially in light of the fact that the next item, we don't have a problem with the painting.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't have any other kind of, uh, whatever you call them, yeah, features.
I do just wanna point out that if there's a problem with the metal awning, there was no problem with covering the entire building in metal. If the whole building can be covered in metal previously...
Yeah.
Then the metal awning goes with the building.
Historically. And it was hideous.
It was pretty bad.
Well, I don't think you'd wanna step backwards, you know, in the whole process. I hope you'd wanna move forward of it.
I'll tell you, that would not be approved today.
No, but we, we did bring these just to show that what we're doing is a grand, grand improvement.
Oh, no, I don't even say, anybody's doubting that. Some of the other details, just to answer Austin's question before we vote, is, I, I'd like to see the details in the awning materials, you know, what they look like. I mean, I've seen some corrugated off some old barns that looks pretty, pretty red and, you know, nasty.
Do you want samples?
Yeah, see, but, uh, you know, the material list, it's gonna be used if you can get samples. But also the details, I don't know how far off from the window, what the angle, the slope's gonna be, you know, maybe like a side view. Um, and the other question I had when reading this was, there's two areas. One was like around the window treatment. Is, is there any proposal on that for painting that the same color or a different color or?
I would paint it to go with the building, the same color. If you, honestly, I'm open to it. If you want the highlighted features to be, uh, white on black, I'm okay with that. And I would make the windows match to accent the features or I...
Well, I guess we...
Put the windows in.
I, well, I guess we, at least I'd like to see is what you're proposing or what you'd like to do.
Well, what Jess drew up was black on black.
Mm-hmm.
Which, if I were to just do the windows and not the building, it would stand out. The windows would stand out.
Well, not, you know, that, if that's what you want, that's what, you know, that's what you made your application on.
Well, basically, if I'm not able to paint the building, then it would affect how I paint the windows.
No, I understand. Um, so like, as far as the paint goes or the stain, you said you're, you're willing to use stain, uh, stain rather than paint. Uh, I think it'd be helpful if you brought the details on that. I'm not familiar with brick staining.
Okay, it's masonry paint, it's made for that, yeah.
Yeah, and I know going through our past experience and some other experience I've had, this painting brick becomes problematic unless it's done correctly.
Right.
Um, stain now brings some other information that's, that I'm not familiar with, uh...
Sherwin-Williams emailed me some information I can get to you.
Okay, now, are the, I mean, obviously, the, the windows are made out of some other material, right?
They're wood trim, wood trim.
Okay, so the, if you've stained the brick, then you'd be painting the windows, whether it be black or whatever.
Correct.
That, that's the kinda detail that I think I'd like to take a look at. The other area is, is there's a panel, um, an existing panel above the storefront.
I think Jess drew that in in case there's glass behind it. We really don't know what's behind it. I've pulled pictures from the historic museum and they've always had a wood covering.
Okay, so this is the...
So I really don't know.
Okay, so these panels here that are...
Possibly not, yeah, if they're not there, it would just be solid black.
Okay, so it's either windows are brick or something.
Right. Right, we just don't know what's back there without pulling it off.
Um, I'm looking at this rendering here.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, "Brick facade painted Sherwin-Williams, um, chartreuse."
That's the thirteen side.
That's the thirteen.
Why is it in my fifteen?
Yeah, it does say that on the fifteen.
What's the typo?
Because that's, uh...
It's black magic.
That's the Thompson side.
Black magic is the...
That's the Thompson fa- uh, facade.
Yeah, black magic is the correct picture there. Yeah, that, that was an error. My apologies. It, it's the black magic.
And I will say that on the building, the sides, um, above the other two roofs are already painted. They were painted before I bought the building. So I'm just asking for the facade to be painted. The others are already painted, so they just need to be done as well.
Just out of curiosity, on the, uh, on the north and south side of the building, so would they, do we also treat that also the same?
It's already painted. I would do the same. I actually would like to put murals up there at some point.
The, okay, so this, these sides are already painted then?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I've done this, I want to walk and look at it.
It's really old paint, though.
It's really old, yeah, it needs to be completely done. But again, I'm gonna have it tuck pointed all at once and cleaned, so I'd rather go in and do it all at once.
That's it, and, uh, Brian Brothers, you know, they do all that.
And he's the one that told me that a lot of the brick was forged on site when they built these buildings. And it's a lot softer than what you would get from a brickyard at the time.
Yeah.
So some of this could be in preservation. That's, you need to consider that when people are asking to, to do some of the repairs to their building, it may be in the building's best interest.
That typically, when you run into that, you have a, a mason that would actually come and test the brick to make that recommendation.
Right.
So that, that could be an avenue, if you wanted to explore.
Yeah, if you can get those details to us, you know, I'd, I'd be interested in the stain itself, you know, putting it on, with the attributes to that, our waterproofing and that type of thing.
Okay.
And the, and the lights.
Yeah, and the lights, yeah, definitely. And I'm sure, whatever lights you've chosen, we can get the specific agreement specification.
I haven't really chosen lights, I was just going by the, I was more worried about the paint at the time.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, so we have a motion to table?
We do.
For a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second from Larry. Any other discussion? Here, now, to take a vote.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Emrick?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Motion is passed to table.
Thank you, thank you very much. Second. Okay, don't go away. Uh, "Certified of Appropriateness for Thirteen South Market Street for Exterior Alterations of Painting Brick Facade, Reframed Wood, Storefront Painting, Et Cetera." Staff have a report?
Yes, sir. So they're, um, building next to the last one. Um, they are proposing to paint the unpainted brick. Um, there is essentially no contributing features on the brick facade. The original storefront was altered. Um, so ultimately, we're operating on a blank slate at this point in time. Um, there, there's four main proposals, um, a reframed storefront, um, in the lagoon color. I, uh, Mr. Wilkie has those. Um, she is proposing cloth awnings on the top three windows that are black and white in color. Um, and on the first floor as well. Um, the brick facade with, um, is proposed to be painted, uh, chartreuse. And then iron wi- window grills and flower boxes are being proposed as well. So per two point six of the design manual, there are no similar colors on this block, um, so that complies with A. B, um, the property has minimal, if any, character-defining features outside of age. Um, there's no brick comb, soldiers or bands that would be affected or otherwise hidden by the paint. Um, and it's simple in color in regards of not too many colors. Um, high gloss paint is being avoided as well. Um, this was the tricky one under E is the bright and abrasive. Um, you can really argue it both ways, but ultimately, I determined that it was not a day-glow hue. So meaning it won't be shiny, glowy, um, during the daylight, based on the color slots.
Did you say glowy?
Glowy, that's a scientific term. Um, the, for two point one five, the storefront design, again, that original storefront's been altered. Um, the proposed ref... The proposed reframing would actually bring back the form and massing of what appears to be the original storefront. Um, so this, this really isn't a, I guess, a themed, um, a themed reconstruction on the storefront. And the proposed materials are wood, so that is consistent with the storefront. Regarding the, um, the awnings, they are cloth. They are individually on all three windows. So, staff does recommend approval of those alterations due to the compliance of the design manual. Um, that was outlined. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a real quick question. I missed this when I was outside looking at this again. There's a striped, uh, small vertical striped, I don't know whether it's an awning, right above the, the entrance door and the, or the window or something, is the proposal? Is that an awning?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that's included in part of the application, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be the same as the three, above the three windows on the third floor, second and a half floor, whatever it is?
Second floor, yes. And again, the windows that are suggested in the drawing, I don't know what's behind the current wood, so it may just be more brick. So, these three windows are questionable.
I understand.
But you want to completely change the first floor face?
Yeah, I'd like to put a door in so it looks like two separate buildings, because right now, there's no door into the storefront. There's only a door into the apartments upstairs. So, at some point, if I were to close off the buildings from each other, it could be a separate business, which would take it back to its original.
How do people get to the storefront?
They go into the fifteen side, because it's opened inside.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, now, now, now I'm thinking about that.
Okay, so that was going to be, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, so that was going to be my question. You know, your intent between thirteen and fifteen, looks like you want it to have the illusion, at least the illusion of being two different buildings.
Correct.
Um, but maybe even more than just the illusion. The black and white striped awning, was that picked, uh, as a way to draw in the paint colors from fifteen? So, if, uh, let's say-
It's complementary.
Okay, so if fifteen didn't happen, if, you know, if the paint, if the black didn't, or black magic, whatever we call it, um, uh, didn't happen and that, uh, brick stayed the same, uh, or stay, stayed unpainted, would, uh, would you still want the black and white striped awnings on thirteen?
I, I think so. I just think that I, they were done to be complementary to each other, but, yeah.
Some of the original- They would work independently.
Yeah, it would work on its own.
Some of the original photos that I saw had pretty much an exact black and white awning, too.
Well, I get that, but you're talking about black and white striped awnings, and now you're talking about, uh, chartreuse and whatever, that green color or blue or whatever.
Lagoon.
Lagoon, thank you, uh, as well. And I'm not a designer, never claimed to be, so I don't know if that works or not. It appears to work, but-
The iron that would go over the windows would also tie that in, because it would have black iron accents, so it would, it would match the door and the window treatment.
Yeah, it's a curious question. Are there, do you have apartments in the upper, upper floors?
I do, and I'm planning on, I have one that is rented out currently, and we've gutted the building to do those improvements for Second Street Living, to help improve that.
Yeah. The, uh, like the planted boxes that you go in there, you're proposing live plant?
Yes.
So, that becomes a-
A watering issue?
A watering issue with it.
That's part of the people who's in that apartment.
Yeah.
Part of their responsibility, but I'll have a hose, too.
Yeah, I, I know, it's different.
I mean, you can get watering systems.
No, I, I think that's, that's, that's the immediate fact, so I'll link that. Actually, I'll link it. Okay, any other questions or comments? Or actions?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion, a second for approval? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Application is approved. All right?
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the rezoning. Yeah, rezoning application for East Troy Development LLC for property at five eighteen East Water Street, from M one to O R one. Report please.
So, the land is currently vacant and was previously home to the Spinnaker coating facility. The surrounding zoning districts include the R six, two-family residential to the south and west. The W O Wellhead Operation District, um, is located directly to the north, and you'll see a zoning map attached as exhibit A. Um, the zoning code describes the proposed O R one as designed to accommodate a mixture of resident, residential and office uses. Medium-intensity residential and office uses are permitted with a lot area requirement of three thousand square feet per dwelling unit. The Conference of Plans' future land use map really provides no recommendations, just shows existing industrial with no future recommendation. Please note that that will be changed when we bring forth the new comp plan in August.
But this map shows, uh, Van Cleve's is R six?
Yeah, Van Cleve's is R six. And it, it's institutional uses are permitted in the residential district.
Probably the city director in, uh, two thousand approved that, did he? Don't remember. Sue would. You can ask Sue.
Oh, really, the, um, the criteria in red, pretty straightforward. The reason for the rezoning, the Spinnaker facility was demolished. Adequate utilities can be provided, um, and it really, it fits in as kind of that transition as we get further outside of downtown between high-intensity commercial and, and buffering that residential.
And does it also, uh, support the downtown riverfront study, which, especially along the river, is looking for mixed use with residential on upper floors and commercial slash office-type uses on the first floor?
That is why it was recommended for the O R, that is. Um, prints will be permitted for mixed use and commercial on the first floor.
The O R does allow late, uh, late commercial type operations?
Yeah, some light retail, office space, things of that nature.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm that in my mind.
And then, due to the straightforward nature of this request, the compliance with the Conference of Plan, and the fact that council is required to hold a public hearing, if the request proceeds on, staff does not feel a public hearing is warranted. And then, um, staff recommends approval. As the proposed rezoning will achieve the, the desired transitional district as discussed in the comp plan and zoning code. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Okay, the first item of business is deter- determine whether or not we hold a public hearing.
A move that we not hold a public hearing.
Motion to not hold a public hearing has been made.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please. And a yes means no public hearing.
Correct. Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Commission will not hold a public hearing.
Okay, next, the next item of business is the commission's to provide recommendation to Detroit Council.
I, I know I've got a prejudice against losing manufacturing property, but refresh me on this riverfront study and, um, and how it was determined that we should go to different uses along the river. Than manufacturing? Right. Just with, uh, uh, its focus on, you know, um, sustaining, improving, um, and, and focusing more effort, energy, attendance, especially on the residential side with, in, in the downtown district, and then bring the river into it. Manufacturing commu-, uh, buildings and uses are really not compatible with those goals. And so, when the MKSK study was done, as it was conveniently called, um, you know, tho- those were the primary goals and objectives that were accepted by, uh, the Planning Commission, I, uh, pretty much, as well as the administration. Everybody recognized that the, the manufacturing that's, has been out there between Hobart Brothers, that is now Kettering Hospital, Hobart Cabinet, uh, which is, still has cabinet in it, I believe, as, as well as some other uses, and then Spinnaker, uh, were legacy manufacturing, and that moving forward, we wanted to, uh, better utilize, especially the river and the river views, since like we like to say, you know, we don't have mountains, we don't have skiing, we don't have beaches, we've got the river. We're going to take out the dam. And make it even more vibrant. Bring back the hovercraft. No promises, though.
Okay. Mr. In the action?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, recommend positive, make a positive recommendation to the council.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second to make positive recommendation to council. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Item number six on our agenda, historical district application certificate of appropriateness for two ten South Market Street for installation of a wall sign. Staff report, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Request has been made by Bear Designs for the installation of wall signs on property located two ten South Market Street. Property is located in the B three central business district. Uh, O H A form design exists on this property as it is a newly constructed building. Uh, the proposed sign will be aluminum, uh, measuring two, three by three, three feet, six square feet total. Uh, the background will be bronze in color with a raised lettering and brushed aluminum. Uh, the proposed sign will be identical to a sign that's currently installed on the building. It would be adjacent to it. Uh, design manual states the following in five point two. Uh, the sign should be considered durable, natural materials consistent with material used in other signs in the district in which the building is located. Five point four wall sign should be three-dimensional with letters carved by router, or the letters should be individual pin-mounted or incorporated into a sign panel. Uh, staff recommends approval, um, based on the following. The proposed signage is in line with the design manual and the city Troy sign code, and similar signage currently exists, uh, within the historic district. That concludes our report. So, this is just for the building signage, not the projecting?
Right.
On the left?
Yes, on the left.
And is this replacing, uh, a sign that was there for a different business?
Yeah, that business moved out.
It's not anything new, it's just a, it's just a new business.
Yes, sir.
New look.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the desire of, uh, commission?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tiderington?
Yes.
Mr. Emmerich?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Yeah, item number seven on the agenda is the application for two ten South Market Street for D R O, uh, application for a projecting sign. This would be the first reading, no action to be taken. The next week, we would have a planning, uh, the next meeting, we would have a public hearing as required by the D R O ordinance, and, uh, then make a recommendation to council at that time. Do we have the report for the reading?
Yeah, so this is, um, pretty straightforward. It's a four point two square foot projecting sign. Pretty much the same exact projecting sign that we went for D R O approval on the T B N building at two twenty-six, uh, South Market Street. Same material, same hardware, um, and I believe the same size. We, we want, we want, uh, projecting signs. They're pedestrian-oriented, um, and I, I would look that, I would think that we were going to start looking at, adding more projecting sign allowances in our, our codes. So, again, we will have a public hearing at our next meeting on the, um, twenty-sixth, I believe, and that really concludes my report.
Okay.
Just, just a comment. We required the first reading and a public hearing on this. I think that was because we were overriding the zoning code and in many cases have a major impact on the downtown. This seems pretty de minimis to go through this procedure, but I, I guess somebody reviewed this and determined it's required?
Yeah, so the, the D R, this is really the only avenue that we have to shy from the standards of the sign code, because we cannot have a variance for sign, for sign type or sign area only for location and placement. So, the only avenue that we have for projecting, for more than one projecting sign is this D R O. We are looking at, with the zoning code update changing that, but as it sits right now, this is the process.
Yeah, I guess the staff is contemplating that, but, um, not sure that that part's going to go anywhere, because I do want to remind everybody that the D R O was a very unusual process that we started. Uh, we did have a significant amount of discussion about this process that you're talking about, and at that time, we streamlined it, uh, a great deal, uh, you know, because we're able to do the, we're able to basically fast-track things, as opposed to the, the formal zoning process, number one. Number two, we also, um, the way the council, uh, set it up after much discussion was that, um, you know, we'll have the hearing here. If it's, if it's a no-brainer, or as you impressively said in Latin, de minimis, uh, uh, in, in nature, then, you know, it just, it's, it's just in, um, the council, it's transmitted to the council, and then the council has so many days that they can decide they want to do a, a public hearing, but the default is that they don't have a public hearing, which means they recognize that this is a no-brainer and, and can move forward. So, it's probably as streamlined as we want to get without really circumventing and then getting too far away from transparency and, you know, somebody decides, well, this particular issue wasn't de minimis, and we're doing things in twenty-four hours rather than fifteen days.
Okay. Well stated.
I, I love it when staff springs new stuff on me when we haven't discussed them. Right, Austin?
Austin's idea.
Okay, we've had the first reading. While we address this, it's a, uh, public hearing at the next meeting. Uh, okay, any other business, or new business?
No, sir.
Having none, is there a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Yeah, motion, second?
Uh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.